This evening, we have two budget presentations. And our first presentation this evening is our Director of Facilities, and that's Henry Savelli, and he's going to give us his budget presentation.
Thank you, Dr. Walkley, Mrs. Thompson, members of the board. I don't know how to follow, but we just witnessed the last few things. Very inspirational, both of them. Welcome to the wonderful world of facilities and operations. I'm gonna give you my take on this year's proposed budget, and hopefully, everything works well. I'm not a real tech guy, but we'll see. I wanted to discuss a few things tonight. Schools in the buildings, the current facilities and operations staffing, the operation of the plant, the maintenance of the plant, which is custodial land, total facilities and operations budget for next year, some accomplishments that we've had, and future considerations that we're looking forward to, and what do you get for your money? That'll be at the end. Just for those of you on the board and the people in the public who might not know the size of the buildings and the amount of acreage we have in the district, we maintain over about 600,000 square feet of buildings and 195 acres, which is, if you think about the size of your house and the size of your lawn, and how long it takes you to do that, just think of how long it takes, you know, the people that we have here to do the job, the way you would do it at home, the same way we want to do it here. My staff consists of myself. I have a half-time administrative school secretary, who's a great help to me. She's answering the bells, she's doing the front desk, she does everything else, too. She's fantastic. For the buildings that we have, for 600,000 square feet, basically, cover that with three maintenance mechanics. And they're running all the time, but they do a great job. For the 195 acres that we need to maintain, we have five groundskeepers, and that's including sports fields, which takes up a lot of time, both in the spring and the fall. We have one full-time person that just spends their time doing that. And the rest of them are trying to keep up with the mowing, and hopefully, the weather cooperates. And for that 600,000 square feet, we have 32 custodial staff, which means we're right about the industry standard for the amount of square footage that custodians can cover in an eight, a seven-hour shift. So the night times are seven, seven and a half hours, but with, if you factor in the breaks and the lunch, you got seven hours to clean 600,000 square feet, and they do a fantastic job. Under operation plan for this year, last year, we had $3,922,000. This year, $3,992,000. The majority of that is through salary increases. We do have one increase in equipment, proposed, $50,000. We wish to try to purchase a new dump truck this year, and it'll be a multipurpose vehicle we'll be able to use. It'll have a dump, it'll have a rack truck that we can take the sides off and use that for me bringing mats and such back and forth to buildings, and it'll also have a plow. So we're gonna have multi-uses out of this. We're replacing a 2001 rack truck that basically does one thing, only carries large items. It doesn't plow, it doesn't help us do a lot of things. So this will, this will not only get our fleet up to date a little better, we haven't had a lot of increases in any vehicles since I've been here for three years. And plowing takes a toll. So this will just get us back up to something, get us back up to maintaining and not having a very aging fleet. So hopefully, we can move ahead with that. Our utilities are staying flat. We expect it to be at least flat next year. Contractual services stay about the same, travel and in services, which we're trying to do for our staff, so we can get them to do a little bit more and not have to go outside, to have outside contractors. So the increase is very minimal for this year. Under the maintenance of plan, the only increase at all this year is in salaries. We're looking at about a $16,000 increase. The total facilities and operations budget, out of this, 89% is the operation of the plant, and the maintenance of the plant is 11%, for a total of $4,501,581. What we've done is, we're implementing a plan to reduce energy and use and the costs. I'm looking at trying to do a fixed pricing for electric for at least a three-year contract to keep us, so we know we're gonna have a steady, we'll know what our budget will be for electric. I'm looking to negotiate lower service contract costs, as I have with our uniform service and with our chillers here for the high school. I'm looking to get them lean, get them leaner, and so we have that money to spend elsewhere. And we've had stabilization of the workforce. We haven't had any turnover in the last year. Things have been quite stable, and we're very happy with the people we have. Future considerations, we'll look toward, as debt service goes down, to maintain our buildings, because we need to do that, just like you would maintain your building at your home, we need to maintain our facilities. So we're looking at a future capital project. We're going to be using the five-year plan, which is, will be done this coming year, and we'll use that to prioritize and implement anything we want to do in the next coming few years. The way things are at facilities planning right now, any project that you would even send up there right now, you wouldn't see back for a year and a half, that backlog. There's 800 projects up there right now. We're trying to reduce the quantity of work contracted out. Some of it where we really have no control over due to the fact that we don't have the equipment. You know, if we need something of heavy duty, we need to bring somebody in that has the equipment to do the work. But there are some things that we're trying to do to cut down on those costs. And the energy performance contract completion is going to be coming up in July, I skipped one, I'm sorry, is coming back up in July. At that point, things are moving along quite well right now. We've done a lot of lighting improvements in the district. We have looked at replacing steam traps in all the buildings, which is maintaining heat at an even level. And we're just seeing a better overall product that we're getting through our heat. We haven't had any problems with our boilers. Everything seems to be moving along. In the summer, we're gonna be replacing a boiler here at the high school. We're also going to be changing transformers to more efficient ones here at the high school, and at that point, we should be in very good shape and start saving some money. I don't know how much at this point, and I don't want to anticipate, so that's why we've kept our utilities flat at this point. If we save, fine. We're hoping AMASCO is correct. If not, we could use that money toward the debt service on the energy performance contract. So we'll be in good shape. Professional development and training opportunities for the staff. We're actually going to have a staff enrichment day here at Beacon on June 30th this year. It's where we bring custodial and maintenance workers from all over the counties in the Mid-Hudson Chapter to come here and take classes, learn from colleagues, and it's a whole day of training for them, and they really enjoy it. We've had it several years over in Middletown, several years at Monroe Woodbury, Arlington, and I'd like to bring it here and show off our high school. I think it'll be great. We're also training some of the gentlemen in the maintenance department on lack-out-tag-out safety, and we're also doing confined space entry, which they've been, it's been lagged, so we're gonna get them back up to stuff on there. So all these things allow us to do more things than us, hopefully. So moving on, what do you get for your money? Well, as our mission is, as the Director of Facilities, you get a clean and safe environment for students and staff to do their job here. We work very hard to have well-maintained buildings and equipment. We have park-like grounds. The guys are very proud of what they do when they're mowing and trimming and taking care of the sports fields, and they do an excellent job. And we've had really little or no graffiti or other damage to buildings from vandalism since I've been here. So it's very, it's been very good. So that way, we can keep our facilities up and running and not spend money on things that we shouldn't have to, so we can use that money elsewhere. So I want to thank you all for having me here this evening. If there's any questions?
The, I've been studying up on solar power, and you know, the price of solar panels have come down quite a bit, and a lot of companies out there, both for commercial as well as for personal, have come out with deals where it's pretty much no money out of your pocket, it's a lease arrangement, so they'll install it for free. Has there been any consideration to looking into a solar panel as a way of, you know, sort of weaning ourselves off of some of the need for the normal electrical grid and cost associated with that?
Well, I've been involved with solar projects. To tell you the truth, to really make a difference, we'd have to cover this roof completely and the surrounding property with solar panels to make any kind of a dent. It would take an immense cost, because you're not gonna get it for free. It's gonna be either leased, or if even if we go through NYSERDA, you're gonna get your state aid. You're still gonna have to pay out for that. As an educational tool, I think it's a good thing. I think there's ways you can bring that into the classroom and do that, and actually, we've looked at this. The trouble is, you know, I've met with a couple of companies. At this point, they don't really want to put anything on the roof, because within the next two or three years, we're gonna have to replace the roof here at Beacon High School. So for them to put something up and then have to take it back down, it just wouldn't be cost-effective for them. At that point, once we do the roof, I would think that we could look into some kind of a solar project, maybe in the 250 kilowatt range. That would just, it's not gonna run a lot, but it is gonna teach the kids how to save energy with solar driving, and actually, they have kiosks that you can have in the classroom, so that you actually can see what you're saving. And it was a good teaching tool, but for long-term, to save a lot of money, it would be very prosperous at this point.
Okay, thanks. For the capital project that you were referring to, is that gonna be replacing existing debt, or is that gonna be in addition to the debt that the district already has?
The debt will, the debt will be coming off as before we go in, out for the next project, so it's maintaining, you need to maintain your buildings. You know, it's just, it's part of the, you know, we have some very old buildings here, but as the public has let us do, they let us maintain them. You know, we can't do everything all at once. It'd be way too much to try to do. But if we maintain every three or four years, going out with a small project, I'm saying 10 million, I'm sorry, that's, but that's small, that helps us maintain the buildings that we own, whether it's through infrastructure, the building envelope, windows, things along those lines. And it just helps us make, you know, new technologies are coming out all the time. And if we can maintain the envelope of the building in a safe manner, then that protects everything else.
I just wanted to say that, you know, looking at this, it looks like a very reasonable budget. I mean, it's a less than 2% increase from last year to this year, so I think that's, you know, certainly within the parameters of what we'd be looking at, so thank you.
We're only at 7% of the total budget for maintenance of the plant, and they do a good job, is what we ask. They do. Thank you very much.
I just wanted to...
Who?
Oh.
Yeah?
Oh, nothing to do.
Oh.
Thank you, Henry.
You're welcome. Have a good evening.
Our next presenter is our Director of Transportation, and Ron Mackey is going to be sharing his budget now.
I just wanted to talk about the Transportation Department a little bit and share some facts with you, where we are, what we're looking to go. Just wanted to, just wanted to point out, right now, our state aid factor is 57.8%. And it's a pretty good percentage. I'm not sure if it's gonna change or not. It all depends on what happens in Albany. I wanted to talk a little bit about where we are first. I'm gonna start off with some fleet statistics. You can see some of the numbers we have in our fleet. Just to point out that TOS stands for temporarily out of service. Those are vehicles that, for some reason or another, either didn't pass DOT or were out of service because they have a maintenance issue. So at this current time, we have 67 fleets, vehicles in our fleet, and we have 64 on the road right now. The average age of the fleet is about seven years, and we have a number of vehicles that we're looking to surplus. This is a little bit about what we do each day. There are, as you know, there are six public schools here in the Beacon School District. However, New York State requires us to transport students up to 15 miles to private schools, as well as all of the special ed locations that we're transporting to. So as you can see right here, we are transporting, we have 47 routes going out every day, servicing about 185 to 190 routes, trips per day, because most of our routes are in tiers, we operate in tiers to pay maximum efficiency. We have 12 buses that service the Beacon High School in Ramout. We have 22 buses that we use with our in-district elementary schools, and we are also transporting to 19 private parochial school locations and to 24 special education locations. So as you can see, we have 50, 49 schools, as of when I did this presentation, because sometimes this number changes based on the changes we get each day. Forty-nine schools, including the Beacon City School District, six schools. The challenging part is, that's 49 school calendars we operate, and we all know what's happening with school calendars because of snow days. They're all changing, so this time of year, we're trying to keep track of who's open, who's closed, who's taking back days. It's a lot for us to keep track of. Just wanted to talk about the staff for a second. We have some staffing statistics up on the board. I'm not gonna read them through. You can see the numbers that are up there. No other state other than New York is more heavily regulated in terms of school bus driver requirements. Above and beyond the CDL license that drivers have to requalify for, that drivers have to obtain, they have to requalify at a number of different points each year, and those are based upon the State Education Department, the Department of Motor Vehicles, Department of Transportation, and the Federal Motor Carrier Safety Administration. So for, for example, every year, drivers have to complete what's called a defensive driving review. They have to, we have to pull their abstract every year to look at their license. They have to have a physical every year. They have to attend certain training refreshers every year, and there are things that they have to do every two years. There's pre-service training and basic training that they have to go through as well. And all of the staff who are certified as drivers, myself included, have to maintain these certifications. So one of the, you'll notice, there's an asterisk next to the head bus driver. One of the things we're looking for is to add an additional head bus driver to help us maintain all of these certifications. If we don't maintain these certifications, there can be fines associated with them, and we don't want to go down that road. Some of the services that we render, aside from the morning and afternoon transportation back and forth to school, we have some additional services. We do field trips, sports trips, work programs out into the community, childcare locations. We currently have about 262 children going to childcare after school, after-school programs that we do for the elementary schools. We also have late runs for the high school and middle school, 504 medical requests, students who are displaced under McKenney-Vento, and tutoring and special services that we have to provide transportation to. Just as a point of note, the track coach was kind enough to provide me with this photo from the students going to the Yale track meet, so... Some of the challenges that we're facing ahead of us. We have some vehicles that are aging out, reaching the end of their useful lifespan, and these vehicles average 12 to 14 years of service with us. We do get a lot of mileage out of our vehicles. We are fortunate enough to have a bus garage where we can park most of our vehicles, so that adds to the lifespan of the vehicle, and we have a preventive maintenance program that we go through. So here you can see these vehicles, 2000, 2002, 2004. You can see the mileage associated with them. What happens if we fail to replace these vehicles? Well, our repair costs will increase. Budgetary increase is necessary to cover the repairs. There's a possibility of more road calls, towing time, downtime, inconvenience to students getting to and from school, and our DOT rating can fall as a result of that. Just to give you some ideas, our average repair cost in 2010, 2011 was about 10 cents a mile. In 2013 to 14, it was 14 cents a mile. Now, we average about 5,000 miles a day with our vehicles. That's enough to get you pretty much to San Diego and back, although I don't know if I went to San Diego, if I'd want to come back right now. But if you look at those figures, at 14 cents a mile, that's $700. At 10 cents a mile, that's $500 a day. So the difference comes out to about $200 a day if we can get that maintenance cost down. If you times that by 180 days, we're talking roughly $36,000 if we can decrease the maintenance Additional effects, inability to cover afternoon trip requests, sports, we saw earlier what our sports, what our athletes are capable of doing, longer bus runs, buses at capacity. We try to maximize the capacity of our buses so that we have a maximum usage, so that we don't have empty seats. And spare vehicles, we need to have spare vehicles for, I realized after I did, is unscheduled breakdowns. We try not to schedule any breakdowns. It should say breakdowns and unscheduled repairs. Scheduled maintenance and inspection, we have to maintain these vehicles, and our vehicles are subject to DOT inspection, so we have to present them to the DOT examiner. He comes to our garage, and all of our vehicles currently are inspected twice a year through a DOT examiner who's an employee from the state DOT. Transportation of displaced students under McKenney-Vento. We never really know when a student is gonna fall into this category, where they have a fire or a situation in their home, where all of a sudden, we find their living somewhere else. Media special education placements into additional schools. We work very hard to try and figure out where all the schools are going to be and maximize and combo runs to get students to where they need to go, but sometimes, there's just that unpredictable factor that we don't know. You get calls, I think we got four changes today that we had to work into the system. Sports trips, field trips, these are all reasons that we need to have a few extra vehicles on hand. What's happening in the district in terms of growth in bus capacity? We have several new developments coming into the district that we need to be aware of. We're looking at townhouse communities going in over in Trishkill and over in, down by the river, there's another community going in there. So what's happening is, we're kind of falling a little bit behind in our replacement schedule. We're replacing vehicles every year, but our fleet really isn't growing. I mentioned earlier that we had 64 vehicles on the road, 67. Last year, we had 69. So we need to stay aware of that. I'm sorry. So what do we need to do? Well, this is what we are looking at in terms of replacing vehicles. We, I had the slide earlier, we're looking at two school buses that we need to surplus for excess mileage. So we're looking at two school vans and a car. We're getting, right now, we're looking at purchasing two school vans with 20 passenger capacity at a cost of $44,000 apiece, one wheelchair van. The wheelchair vans tend to have a little bit more of a cost because of all the special equipment involved, and two 72-passenger school buses. So in terms of our vehicle proposition, we're looking for about $374,000. I put the asterisk there because I tried to give nice round numbers. We need to account for the consumer price index that's associated with the vendors. Additionally, what we're looking for is that head bus driver position. Our staffing setup is pretty much set up the same way it was 20 years ago. You guys that were here 20 years ago pretty much know how the district has grown, the number of schools that we're servicing. So we're looking to bring on another head bus driver position to help us maintain compliance of the drivers, handle all the routing issues that we have. And the other issue that we, we hope to address is a capital project, putting a generator down at the bus garage. The problem is that without, if the power goes out and the kids are at school, we can't open the doors to the fine bus garage that we have, and we are not gonna be able to pump gas. The other thing is our data communications. All of our student records are on a database, which I back up monthly. We do have emergency procedures in place if we were to run out of electricity, if we did have electrical failure. But this is a consideration that we need to look at, because these garage doors that we have here, you can see there's five of these doors on the front end of the building, there's another five on the rear end of the building, and they're about 12 feet high and double with metal doors. There's no pull chains on them, so what we need to consider is somehow being able to open up and operate and run our communications and be able to pump fuel should we have a power outage. So I'm gonna play a short clip here for you.
Wait, let me do this first. Okay, quickly. So I'm, I'm the tag team that's doing the money part. So just a couple of things I just want to emphasize, and then Ron will be available for any questions that you have. So on your budget sheet, some of the numbers kind of... So, on your budget sheet, some of the numbers kind of, we prepared this Excel spreadsheet. So, the numbers, as we were looking at it, are a little bit different than what we have in the budget. So, I want to give credit to the Transportation Department because their increase, if you calculate on the 15, 16 budget line, is only 2.9 percent. So, it's an $86,000 difference. So, there's a couple of extra zeros in two of the columns that we would, you know, bring forward to the regular budget. Ron also mentioned an additional head bus driver position. And as you know, we still don't know what our state aid number is going to be. So, we're presenting going forward. That's obviously something that we have to decide later on once we get our final numbers. That's something that we would like to do. But we must see where we are as far as the revenue side when we get it. And Ron also mentioned the generator, and he mentioned a capital project. And Henry was able to mention going forward on a capital project. We still have a $12 million capital project that we did a few, several years ago that is still open. We still have about $1 million left. We are trying to close that out. Some of the things that we are trying to do is maximize the Excel aid that we were allocated years ago. So, we're trying to fit that generator in there and not have to wait for a capital, a future capital project because we have to watch the debt service. When the debt service does decrease a little bit, then we'd be able to grab, we're talking three, four years. We think the generator might be an important aspect to put in to what we have left. So, I just wanted to clear up a couple of things there. So, Ron's available for questions, if you have any.
I'm not sure if this is more toward Anne Marie. But in the past, I remember us always having bus propositions when we were acquiring new buses. So, I was wondering why this year that wasn't presented. I wasn't sure if there was one, or...
It was. So, this, so the vehicle needs will be what we are going to ask the board to put out as a proposition, too. And as you remember, last year, we did finance the bus proposition. Because of the tax cap calculation, it's the budget and the bus proposition together. So, to maximize the amount of growth in the budget, we are able to finance. So, our plan is to finance this as well. So, again, not knowing what the state aid is and trying to come up with, you know, where we, you know, estimate our levy, our tax levy to be, we're proposing a $374,000 proposition. In the next board meeting, in the next workshop, we will have a little better idea because I have to submit the tax levy. So, we'll be a little closer as to exactly where we need to be and how we're going to get there.
So, I guess I was just looking for the word proposition in there to see if it was separate. I didn't realize this was separate. It's, you know, would be listed as a proposition as opposed to a part of the budget. My other question was, would the district still get that benefit? You had talked in the past about purchasing buses proactively as opposed to waiting until they break down, and then you're required to replace them, and you don't get that matching money that comes to it. Could you talk a little about that?
Yes. If we're able to purchase buses, Ron had started out his presentation by talking about transportation aid, and we get 57 percent in transportation aid. I think prior to Ron being here, or maybe it was when you first here, we did have a proposition that did not get voted through. And we had to do an emergency lease where we do not get any building, we don't get any transportation aid on. So, it's just, it's an expenditure. It hits the general fund. It really hits an area where we hadn't anticipated it because we were hoping the proposition would pass and we would be able to increase the tax levy by that. So, yes. And as we go forward and as we get closer when we do the whole budget in its entirety and we talk about the proposition, I will mention that again as an important part.
I just think for the calendar year, it's repeated. Is this 2014, 15, and is it 2014, 15?
Yes, 15, 16. Yes, I'll make the change. There's a couple of changes on there that I'll make and I'll present to you.
Yes, I did notice the same thing.
And the same thing for oil, right? Is oil right?
The oil looks like that's a typo.
Yes. Yes, that is a, that's...
Okay, I was breaking them out for five seconds.
They do have more oil as they get older, though, right?
Not that much. Kenny, there are two extra zeros in two of the columns. So, that's why I wanted to start off by saying that his, the total budget for transportation...
Yeah, if you look a little further down, the contractual expense did not go up to $50,000 from $5,000 either, so...
We wouldn't let that happen.
And then the head bus driver position, that's going to fall under dispatch? So, that eats up that increase as well?
That increase is correct because that would be the additional salary, yes, in head bus driver. And again, hoping that we get the adequate amount of state aid to actually fund this and make the budget work altogether. So, that's something that we have to wait a little bit to say.
For the new buses that we'd like to buy, we do get the state aid, but that's distributed over a number of years. Is the plan that the financing would sort of match the same payment pattern for the reimbursement from the state?
Yes. The transportation aid is broken up over five years, and that would be our intention to finance them over five years to kind of match that. So, we're getting the 57 percent back over a five-year period, yes.
May I just say, just to reemphasize for the audience, I mean, it's been nice the last couple of years where, when we have a proposition for the extra buses, that people have voted for that. As you can see, I mean, the buses that we're looking to get rid of are high mileage. And as we all know, for those of us who like to save our cars till they fall apart, it does get to the point where it's not worth saving something after a while because it just, the repairs start to become onerous and it becomes unreliable. And even though the maintenance garage does a great job of maintaining it, you never know when the buses get high mileage and have 10, 12 years on them, how much they're going to break down. And as was mentioned, there was one year in the past where the proposition to buy a few extra buses was voted down. We still had the needs, and so we had to go out and lease a bus. And you don't get aid on the lease of the bus. And so, it really, it means in the long run, it's going to be more expensive because if you buy the bus, you're getting 50 percent of it back from the state anyway. So, by lease, by, if you lease a bus instead of purchasing, obviously, that's a one-time expense with no reimbursement. Whereas if you have a bus that lasts, you know, eight to 12 years, the cost of the bus minus the half that we're getting back from the state distributed over those years is much cheaper than the price for a lease. So, it really is economically better for us to be allowed to purchase the buses. And the other thing is, we try and, sometimes people say to me, "Why are you doing this? You did this last year and the year before." The answer is, it's a big fleet. You don't want to wait for all of us to have to be replaced at the same time. That would be much too, much, much too expensive. And so, it makes sense to, when you have such a large fleet, to just turn over a couple of buses per year. And that way, the increase is not quite as much.
Right. And, I'm sorry, I don't know. I've got something here. These figures also include certain warranties that are included in the purchase of these vehicles as well. When you have the older vehicles, once the warranties expire, those are all out-of-pocket expenses. So, with the newer vehicles, you do have warranties that are being paid for when you purchase the vehicles as well.
Any other questions?
With the anticipation of the Trishkell purchases you were talking about, would there be a need to increase the bus fleet? Like, are we looking at the fact that we may need to increase the bus fleet to handle around people that may move into that community to bus the kids to school, or we're just going to...
Well, the two neighborhoods that were, that are in development right now, it's a kind of a tricky thing because what we want to do is, we want the bus proposition to pass. So, we're always running that line between what we think we really need and what we think we need to pass. So, we're trying to put up a proposition that we think that the public will support. And if we put up too high a figure, we're afraid that it won't be supported. And I think this is kind of the number where we've been able to be successful with. So, having looked at all of those things, we think that we can be able to cover those fleets. The other thing that happens with buses is a time thing. You know, a lot of times, I'll get calls from parents and say, "Well, the buses, the school is only six minutes away. Why does it take my son 30 minutes to get to school?" And if you coached a soccer team and you had to pick up everyone on your team, by the time you picked everyone up and got to the field, it would probably take you a half an hour to do that. So, you know, we do try to run pretty efficiently. And it does take us a little bit of time to make these stops. The most important thing for us is the safety of the children. So, when we're stopping, we're picking up a child, we want to make sure we have that bus stop, that the area is secured, that the child is safely getting on the bus or getting off the bus. We call that the moment of truth. And we want to make sure that that's a safe process for these students. There's, we talk in training all the time about the difference between speeding and rushing. Okay, we don't want the drivers to speed, but we don't want them to rush through their procedures either. Just to touch on a topic, I was at a workshop in Albany this past week. In the last, last couple of months, there have been three dragging incidents in the state of New York. These are incidents where students were trapped by their bookbags into the bus doors, and they were dragged. Now, thankfully, very fortunately, none of the students were injured. But it's something that we look at very closely. And we want to make sure that we give the students adequate time to get on and off the buses, that we're looking at this. And we, as an industry, have been asked to look at this and to retrain our staff in terms of, we have an excellent group of drivers here at Beacon, but this is something that we never want to happen in Beacon. We don't want it to happen in New York. We don't want it to happen anywhere. So, we're looking at this and wondering, what's the reason for this? And there's been some things that are going through and some points that we're talking about with our staff to prevent these kind of things. So, part of this has to do with the design of the vehicles. In the olden days, we had the door. You would open the door, close the door, and your line of sight was right there at the doorway. So, we have procedures that we teach the staff, I'm sorry, for the safety, loading and unloading of students. And some of these procedures aren't readily visible. This is a lot of times why we tell parents that we can't have a conversation when we're loading students because we need to be focused on the students getting on and off the bus safely. We need to be focused on watching for cars passing. So, the drivers are taught to tell parents to call the bus garage if they have a concern, and we can discuss it with them there. So, this is one of, I'm sorry, I'm getting off. I'm preaching. But that's a big concern. So, we look at these trends, and we, I'm sorry. There's been a lot of snow this year. I've had a lot of 3:00 AM mornings.
It looks like we had a couple of questions from the audience. And if you don't mind, if you'd like to answer them. Yes, sir?
When you buy them two buses, what do you do with the other two that you're going to get rid of? You trade them in, or you sell them to somebody else?
We have done other things. We had traded them in. We have surplus them off.
So, that figure would be right. If you trade them in, you would get something for the old bus. So, that's not a true figure to be left in the 112 bus?
It might be a little bit less, yes. As the buses age out and they don't pass DOT, they're able to, they're bought back, and some of them wind up down in South America.
But the point is that you don't put that in your budget, that these two old buses are going to be purchased by somebody, and that would bring down the budget.
Can I, I'm sorry. I don't mean to interrupt you. If, from an accounting standpoint, it has to be done differently than that. So, Ron is presenting the proposition on the purchase. If we were to surplus vehicles, without getting into gory detail, that would be a revenue item for the general fund budget. So, it wouldn't be part of the proposition. We're asking the voters to go out and vote this. If we were to surplus the vehicles at a later time, it would be recorded to a revenue account in the general fund. So, it's a little bit of semantics, but Ron doesn't know, none of us really know, you know, what we're going to be doing with the vehicles. He keeps them in spare until he absolutely has to surplus them. And then if they are surplus, then they go and they get sold off that way. But to actually go out and do a proposition, we have to give you the true value of what it would cost, just like you would go buy a car, the same thing, right? Would be that.
Well, you have the two buses. That means that everything that you said would go up, with maintenance and gas, gas and everything else would go up because you have two more buses to maintain.
Yeah. The buses, and again, this figure is an up-to figure. It's not an absolute figure. What happens sometimes, I believe the actual quotes for the buses are usually like around 111 and so many hundred dollars. But to make it clear, a little clearer, we just round it up. So, this would not be the final cost. And a lot of times, the vendors are interested in buying our old buses and trading our old buses. So, when we do that, we will see a savings. But by going with the proposition and asking the public to approve this amount, it's a spend-up-to amount. It's not an absolute amount.
Do we have any other questions? Does anyone else have a question? Thank you, Ron. Thank you, Anne Marie.
Okay, thank you.
I have a motion for executive session.
A motion to adjourn to executive session to review the employment history of a particular individual. And the board will return as soon as possible.
Second?